Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the enhanced interactive dialogue on the human rights situation in Eritrea. Please have a seat. In its Resolution 35/35, the Council decided to hold at this session an enhanced interactive dialogue on the human rights situation in Eritrea with the participation of the Special Rapporteur, the Office of the High Commissioner, civil society and other relevant stakeholders. I would like to welcome our distinguished presenters. It's Ms. Kate Gilmore, Deputy High Commissioner for Human Rights; Ms. Sheila Keterud, Special Rapporteur on the situation of human rights in Eritrea; Ms. Remi Noguilumbo, African Commissioner on Human and People's Rights; Ms. Veronica Almedon, Information Forum for Eritrea; and Ms. Pamela Delargy, Public Health Specialist. Before I give the floor to the presenters, I would like to remind you that the list of speakers opened on 21st February and I will close it in 15 minutes. I will now give the floor to our presenters, and each presenter will have five minutes for his or her statement. So I start with the Deputy High Commissioner for Human Rights. You have the floor, madam.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen, as you may be aware, in recent times, the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights has been engaged in dialogue with and provided technical assistance to the government of Eritrea, including in the form of a mission to Asmara in October last year. I will elaborate further on this engagement in an oral update on Wednesday, 14th of March. Today, however, I wish to focus on the human rights situation in the country. Since the Council's last deliberations on this important question in June of 2017, our office has continued to receive reports of severe curtailment of human rights in Eritrea. In the past year, we've received worrying allegations of restrictions of freedom of religion, including allegations of arrests of over 100 persons practicing religions not officially recognized by the state, as well as the suppression of a protest outside an Islamic school after its 93-year-old founder was arrested for opposing takeover of the school by the state. The man died two weeks ago on release from detention. It remains difficult for us to verify such allegations and to assess overall the human rights situation in Eritrea, given our restricted access to the country, the absence too of independent actors, whether media, non-governmental organizations, or others, who can monitor and report on the situation from within the country. This Council and the Special Rapporteur on the situation of human rights in Eritrea, as well as the Commission of Inquiry on Eritrea, have repeatedly called on the government to cooperate, to allow human rights defenders and independent civil society organizations to operate without interference, to permit independent human rights monitors unhindered access to the country, including to places of detention. We reiterate that call today. Excellencies, in 2016, the Commission of Inquiry on Eritrea found reasonable grounds to believe that crimes against humanity, namely enslavement, imprisonment, enforced disappearance as torture, other inhumane acts, persecution, rape, and murder, had been committed since 1991. The Commission noted that despite the state's increased engagement with the international community, still there was no evidence of progress in the field of human rights. I regret to advise that this state of affairs remains unchanged. The Commission's 2016 findings on extensive use of arbitrary arrest and detention remain relevant. Detainees are rarely brought before a judge after arrest or being tried, which enables enforced disappearance and the use of torture. We urge Eritrea to immediately release all those unlawfully and arbitrarily detained, to fully respect their right to a fair trial, and to provide information on the whereabouts of disappeared persons and access to justice for family members. Excellencies, fear of arbitrary arrest and incommunicado detention curtail freedom of expression, leaving no room for dissent or criticism. There are still no privately owned media outlets, with the government controlling their Eritrean TV channel, radio stations, and written press. This means by a number of assessments and indices of freedom of speech, Eritrea continues to rank amongst the least free of all countries in the world. Eritreans continue to be subjected to indefinite military national service. Conscripts are drafted for an open-ended duration of service beyond the 18 months provided by law, often in abusive conditions, including through the use of torture, sexual violence, and forced labor. Those who attempt to desert military service, often after years of conscription, are subjected to detention and punishment, often amounting to torture. Given the abuses that occur in the context of national service, the idea that this system is instrumental in addressing youth unemployment is abhorrent. Excellencies, Eritrea's constitution of 1997 has never been in full force, and we urge the government to implement it without delay. Further, the government must introduce serious efforts to address impunity and hold those responsible for past and ongoing human rights violations to account. During its second universal periodic review in February 2014, Eritrea made important commitments, and we urge the government to keep those commitments. We further note that without advance in human rights progress, there will continue to be fueled a steady stream of asylum seekers from Eritrea. I also wish you to be aware that Eritrea asylum seekers' protection criteria remain unaltered since 2011. Some six years later, in June 2017, the Special Rapporteur advised this Council that there can be no sustainable solution to refugee outflows until the government complies with its human rights obligation. And in that spirit, I reiterate our call for the government to cooperate with the mandate of the Special Rapporteur. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Sheila Keterud has the floor, Special Rapporteur on the situation of human rights in Eritrea.
Madam Vice President, fellow panelists, distinguished delegates, and ladies and gentlemen, now while participating in this enhanced interactive dialogue, I intend to provide an update on the current situation of human rights in Eritrea. My monitoring of the current situation shows that the patterns of human rights violations identified by both my mandate and that of the Commission of Inquiry on Human Rights in Eritrea continue unabated. I will focus on the right to life, the right to liberty and security of the person, freedom from arbitrary arrest and detention, freedom of expression, assembly and association, and freedom of religious belief, to name but this ones. When I addressed the Third Committee of the General Assembly in October 2017, I pointed out that Eritrea continued to keep people in custody until death. Following the recent events in the Akria neighborhood of Asmara, another name has been added to the long list of known and unknown individuals who die while in the custody of the Eritrean government. On Saturday, 3rd March, the family of Haji Musa Mohammed Noor, aged 93, received information that the respected elder and former freedom fighter died while in jail. He had been arbitrarily arrested and detained for almost four months. Reports reaching me from credible sources point to the arrest of hundreds of people, mainly men, and some of them young boys, as young as 13 years after the burial of Haji Musa. The arrests continue. The genesis of this continuing series of breaches, as the Deputy High Commissioner has said, is repression. So I don't need to go into the full details, but however, Haji Musa was put in jail in October 2013 and afforded no due process. Members of the Management Committee, including Haji Musa and other school officials, were arrested because they declined implementing the orders of the government relating to the administration of the Aldea private secondary school located in the Akria neighborhood. They resisted the imposition of restrictions, including banning Muslim girls attending the school from wearing the veil or the hijab, the discontinuation of religious teachings, as well as the introduction of co-education. Several people were arrested. The numbers are difficult to quantify, but the arrests happened during the protests against the arrest of school officials, and these governments imposed restrictions. Armed law officers violently dispersed the crowd, wielding truncheons and firing gunshots in the air. Now, this was the first wave of arrests. After the burial of Haji Musa on Saturday, the fourth, the second wave of mass arrests started. I continue to receive reports of these arrests, including of children. The government of Eritrea implemented its notorious and repeatedly documented modus operandi once more: mass arrests to instill fear, those in custody are not allowed to exercise their right to due process, to challenge the legality of their detention. Family members have not received any formal notification of the arrest and detention of their loved ones. However, some family members have been able to find out where their loved ones were and to bring food and other clothes, for example. Now, freedom of religion. Both followers of recognized and unrecognized religions continue to be targeted for their religious beliefs. The minor seminary school in Asmara, which provides religious education to aspiring priests and nuns of the Catholic Church, was closed in October 2017. Two representatives of the school, a priest and a nun, were arrested and detained for refusing to hand over the list of students enrolled at the school. Six health clinics belonging to the run by the Catholic Church across the country have also been closed. The list is long, about 300 businesses have been closed. I have lots of other information which I'll be happy to impart during the interactive dialogue.
Thank you very much, and I now give the floor to Mr. Remi Noguilumbo, African Commissioner on Human and People's Rights. Sir, you have the floor.
Madam Vice President. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Distinguished panelists, at the outset, I would like to thank the President of the Human Rights Council, Voislav Suk, for the invitation to the African Commission on Human and People's Rights, expressed in a letter of 8th February. I would also like to convey greetings from Ms. Soyeta Maiga, President of the Commission, who asked me to convey to this forum a message of strapping up cooperation, exchange, and understanding between all UN monitoring mechanisms on human rights and the mechanisms under the African Charter on Human and People's Rights, as well as the protocols. This afternoon, I am speaking on behalf of one of my colleagues, Ms. Jemcina King, who is the country rapporteur responsible for Eritrea. The human rights situation in Eritrea is of great concern. There is need to mobilize to help that country's government to respect its commitments under all international commitments and the African Charter on Human and People's Rights and Protocols there too. The country has been subjected to human rights violations for a very long time, and the Commission therefore asked the governments of Ethiopia and Eritrea to stop hostilities, renounce the vindictive practice of forced deportations, respect the ceasefire, and make the necessary efforts to give a chance to a peaceful settlement. Six years on, the African Commission on Human and People's Rights once more reviewed the matter, recalling the attacks on freedom of opinion and assembly and the right to a fair trial. It was also gravely concerned by arbitrary arrests and detention without trial of former ministers and government officials. Opposition members, journalists, and media representatives, the Commission asked the government of Eritrea to comply with its obligations under the founding act of the African Union and the African Charter on Human and People's Rights, as well as other relevant instruments to which Eritrea's party. It also called on the government of that country to respect international and regional instruments that it had ratified, including the African Charter on Human and People's Rights, the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, the International Covenants on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights, and to cooperate with the African Commission on Human and People's Rights. In Resolution 270 on the human rights situation in Africa, the Commission declared that it was deeply concerned by the situation in Eritrea, characterized by many arbitrary arrests and detentions without trial of former ministers, security force members, opposition members, journalists, and other media staff in violation of the provisions of the African Charter. Under the United Nations, the Human Rights Council adopted Resolution 35, as we know, at its 35th session, and that called for strengthened dialogue on the human rights situation at the 37th session where the African Commission took part. The resolution also called on the government of Eritrea to cooperate with all regional mechanisms on human rights. The Commission, in that connection, welcomes the fact that the Eritrean government under President Isaiah Afewoki, who since 22 February 18th, has submitted the first report under the African Charter on Human and People's Rights, which the public can consult on our website. It will be reviewed at the 62nd ordinary session of the Commission in Mauritania from 25th April to 9th May this year. It covers the period 1999 to 2016. This will be a review of the general situation as regards human rights in the country and will allow a constructive dialogue with the government of Eritrea. The recommendations that result therefrom will, we hope, provide a step in the right direction. The report appears to have been drawn up in cooperation with Eritrean civil society as stated in its paragraph two. It covers civil and political rights, economic, social, and cultural rights, and the right to development. It also reflects the collective right to international peace and security. By chance, it is often at six-year intervals that the bodies responsible for fundamental rights turn to Eritrea to seek progress on human rights there. The African Commission thanks the Council for this invitation and the disposal of the representatives of various delegations for exchanges on ways to help Eritrea satisfactorily to apply the provisions under the various international conventions to which Eritrea voluntarily adhered. Thank you.
Merci, monsieur. And I have to remind you that the list of speakers is now closed, and I now give the floor to Ms. Veronica Almedon, Information Forum for Eritrea. You have the floor, madam.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Dear Madam Deputy High Commissioner, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. It is often raised by the Eritrean delegation that the process of nation building is in the heart of the government's mission. As its name indicates, nation building is obviously not the project of a few. It ordinarily embraces the contribution of every single individual in the society. Just in the same way as the human body operates, every organ has its distinctive function, and it would be senseless to assume that one single organ, like the heart, for example, could take over the functions of the lungs or the kidney. Mrs. Vice President, dear delegates, dear excellencies, allow me to now go back to discussing Eritrea. PFDJ, which is a political party driven by its very distinctive ideology, has been acting as though it could represent all the functions and all the demographic groups that exist in the Eritrean society, from young to old, from the private sector to the public sector, from the judiciary to the legislative to the executive branch, and to the army, from education to religion to information, et cetera, et cetera. Such brutal dominion over all aspects of a given society would profoundly hurt a population and its cohesion, and this is one of the vicious cycles of oppression in which the Eritrean society has been trapped in. So far, exile has been their only safeguard, given the fact that, given the lack of robust and effective governance mechanisms at national level as well as continental level. For the past five years, I've had the chance to spend a considerable amount of time with unaccompanied Eritrean minors, who live in Geneva and other areas of Switzerland. From the moment I began this work in 2013 till today, five years later, not much has changed positively. It has certainly not been the same narrative upheld by the Eritrean government, but as we say, the story as recounted by the lion is not going to be told in the same way as the one told by the gazelle. The fear of being subjected to ill-treatments is a recurrent threat that I hear when I ask Eritrean teenagers why they left Eritrea. Also, the fact that the government of Eritrea imposes one single, very formatted model to a population of 4 million people is not only objectively unsustainable because it increases popularization, but also because it profoundly goes against the natural rights of every individual to be the sole architect of their destiny, dreams, and aspirations. One would think that indefinite national military service, a hugely rights-restricted measure, would at least yield a highly lucrative or results-oriented purpose. However, the sacrifice of national service that is delivered by thousands of Eritrean youths is not even being translated into gratifying results that benefit the nation. Quite the contrary, the infrastructure is deteriorating, as electricity shortage is common, even in places like hospitals. So my question to Mr. Ambassador, who is not here, I regret to see an empty chair, my question is, according to your party and its views, what effective value does this model of society bring to Eritrea? What sustainable benefit can Eritrea gain from this system of governance when we see a clear pattern of exile over the years, when we see disgraceful deals made to exchange your nationals in exchange of pecuniary gains? What we observe with the Eritrean government is lack of fulfillment of its obligations, grave violations of the Constitution or inertia when it comes to internal issues with the government of Eritrea. Indeed, there has not been any redressment in nearly 17 years of political oppression, no initiation of a dialogue with its civil society, no creation of at least a few economic incentives to keep the youth at home. This lack of commitment to the supreme rule of law, to public service, and to the Eritrean population is not acceptable. The deliberate institutional disarray in favor of the politics of the belly is not acceptable. Treating Eritrean soul as a private property by extracting gold and selling the port of asap for foreign entities without the consent of the Eritrean people, notwithstanding the fact that the nature of this transaction is immoral and unethical, all this is not acceptable. These arbitrary and irresponsible decisions do not reflect the general willingness of the Eritrean society. Rather, it is brutally forced upon them, and the world sees it. So no one should be surprised of such country-specific mandate, which moreover remains the sole remedy for Eritrean victims and human rights defenders to be heard. So this platform is necessary. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I now give the floor to Pamela Delargy. You have the floor.
Thank you. I want to say a few words this morning about Eritreans who are outside of Eritrea. And I think in the deliberations on human rights in Eritrea, there has not been quite enough discussion about the protection needs of Eritreans who are outside. We know that Eritreans outside represent a significant proportion of the population. We know, sitting in Europe, that Eritreans have represented a significant proportion of those arriving across the Mediterranean. Some of us know the horrible stories of the abduction and torture of Eritrean refugees in the Sinai from 2010 to 2014, where people who had sought asylum in Sudan were taken by smugglers and traffickers to the Sinai, burned, raped, organs harvested, et cetera, some of whom made it safely to Israel, where they now also face a protection problem and possible deportation. I think there are not a group in the world that have faced such a variety of protection challenges at Eritreans who have left Eritrea. We have to look around. People have gone to all the neighboring countries and have faced many different issues: lack of livelihoods, lack of access to health services, in many cases trafficking, smuggling, abduction, extortion. There are thousands of Eritrean families in this world who have received that frightening call from an abductor saying, "We have your relative. We are torturing them. You must give $2,000, or $10,000, or $20,000 to have them freed." This is a story which has gone largely unreported in the international media. If we look today at the situation of refugees and migrants in Libya, we find that Eritreans are the second-largest group of refugees in Libya, who are suffering in detention centers, abducted sometimes by Islamic State. You've probably seen some of the coverage of that, including some who are actually executed on the beach in Libya. There are Eritrean refugees who sought refuge in Yemen, who are in the midst of the bombs, the closing of schools, the loss of housing, the loss of education, the loss of access to any health care, and yet have no way to go out safely. The growing number of unaccompanied children in Europe and in Egypt has a large proportion of Eritrean refugees in it. In fact, of the over 3,000 unaccompanied children and separated minors who arrived in Egypt last year, over half of them were Eritrean, mostly ages 14 to 17, but some as young as four. In the work that I did with the Special Representative on Migration in Calais in France, we found Eritreans aged 12, aged 13, aged 14, boys and girls, who had come, some at the urging of their families and some without the knowledge of their families. The condition that these refugees are facing all over the world, and I say "the world" because they are today sitting in Mexico in detention centers, at least three dozen Eritrean refugees. The conditions that they are facing in terms of their physical health, their mental health, their family separation are truly deplorable, and I think it's a human rights situation that we cannot neglect when we talk about Eritrea. They arrive in bad shape, physically, psychologically, they are isolated, and yet sometimes the question is asked is, "Well, why did they leave exactly? Did they leave?" Did they leave for reasons that come strictly under the 1951 Refugee Convention?” I think as we look at this as human rights activists and practitioners, any mix of motivations of leaving should not compromise the right to protection and to human rights that refugees and migrants face. Thank you.
As it is the practice in our discussion, we would now start by hearing the delegation of the country concerned. But I can see they're not in the room. So I now invite interested delegations to ask questions to the presenters and to make comments on their statements. Before I give the floor to the first speaker on the list, I would like to remind you that the speaking time limit is two minutes for all today. And I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. The European Union thanks the Special Rapporteur, the Office of the High Commissioner, and the distinguished speakers for their presentations. We remain deeply concerned about the human rights situation in Eritrea. We regret the lack of substantial measures so far to address areas highlighted by HRC resolutions, the Special Rapporteur, and the former Commission of Inquiry. We welcome some positive developments, including Eritrea's renewed engagement with international actors, as seen with continued visits by the OHCHR staff. We also welcome Eritrea's readiness to engage in dialogues on human rights issues with third countries. We urge the government to cooperate fully with UN mechanisms, in particular with the Special Rapporteur. We also encourage Eritrea to fully cooperate with the Office of the High Commissioner and to consider the establishment of an OHCHR office in Eritrea. We call upon Eritrea to take forward substantial institutional and legal reforms to ensure the respect for human rights and fundamental freedoms and the rule of law, to end the practice of arbitrary detention, to work towards ending the indefinite compulsory military service, to take concrete measures to fight impunity, and to implement the ’92 UPR’s second-cycle accepted recommendations. In this regard, we welcome the issuance of the UPR midterm report by Eritrea. We also urge the government to respect freedom of religion or belief and the property rights, including those of foreign communities. The European Union would like to ask the Special Rapporteur what her assessment is on the general trend regarding human rights in Eritrea. I thank you.
Thank you. Now Norway has the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Norway would like to thank the Special Rapporteur once again for her efforts. As a longstanding friend of Eritrea, we remain deeply concerned by the reports of grave human right violations in the country. Upholding human rights is an integral part of government's duties towards its citizens, and it's therefore vital to ensure transparency as regards both to progress and areas where improvements are still needed. Reliable data and statistics are essential for verifying Eritrea's human rights status. We welcome the commitment made by the government of Eritrea to collaborate on the implementation of accepted UPR recommendations. However, in order to strengthen accountability and the implementation of human rights obligation, we urge Eritrea to allow experts from the UN to access the country. Cooperation with special procedures representatives, including both those with thematic and country-specific mandates, is crucial to complement the UPR process. And we would like very much to hear the panel's views on how to cooperate with Eritrea in order to facilitate future visits of this kind. Norway recognized that there had been some human rights improvements in the country. Focus on gender equality and fight against harmful practices are commendable. However, several challenges remain. Much still needs to be done, among them to establish and ensure respect for the rule of law. We strongly encourage Eritrea to continue its cooperation with the UN Country Team and OHCHR on strengthening the administration of justice. And we would be interested in her views from the panel on how to move this agenda. We appreciate the government of Eritrea's readiness to engage in bilateral dialogues on human rights, though regret their lack of presence here today. Also, we encourage Eritrea to cooperate closely with the UN on capacity building and reform in order to achieve the STGs, including human rights targets. And Norway will again reiterate its recommendation that Eritrea should invite OHCHR to establish an office in the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Switzerland has the floor.
Madam Vice President. Switzerland would like to thank the Special Rapporteur and the Deputy High Commissioner and the other participants for the presentation this afternoon. Switzerland remains concerned at the human rights situation in Eritrea and the lack of reliable information that is available because of the lack of free access and independent access to the country. We regret the fact that Eritrea is not here this afternoon and calls upon Eritrea to take immediate, concrete actions to give access to the country and to improve the human rights situation in the country. My delegation welcomes the decision of Eritrea to be actively involved, to follow up on the recommendations submitted from the UPR, as well as the organization of a workshop on the administration of the justice with the OHCHR and the UN Country Team in Asmara in October 2017. It also welcomes the fact that Eritrea is ready to discuss human rights issues bilaterally. It calls upon Eritrea nevertheless to go further than that. In particular, it encourages Eritrea to strengthen its cooperation with OHCHR in the long term by inviting it to establish a country office and to cooperate with all this council's mechanisms and in particular, the special procedures of the council. Switzerland is ready to continue its dialogue and cooperation with the UN mechanisms and agencies and with the Eritrea to improve the human rights situation in the country. Switzerland would like to ask two questions. They are the following. Number one, the Human Rights Workshop on Administrative Justice in Asmara was a few months ago already. What are your priority follow-up recommendations in this area and your project? Number two, the cooperation of Eritrea with the UN Human Rights Protection Systems is to be encouraged. What special OHCHR support can OHCHR give Eritrea to strengthen its capacity, to help Eritrea to meet its treaty body reporting obligations? I now give the floor to the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Special Rapporteur. We appreciate your updates on the recent passing of Musa Mohammed Noor and the situation in the Akira neighborhood. We value your assessment on the human rights situation in Eritrea and your mandate to inform this council. And we reiterate our desire for the Eritrean government to cooperate with you and with the international community by allowing access to evaluate the situation inside the country firsthand. We call on the Eritrean government to implement and comply with its international obligations by ensuring an independent and transparent judiciary, improving detention conditions, and releasing individuals arbitrarily detained, including political prisoners, journalists, and members of religious groups held on account of their beliefs. Among our most serious concerns is the indefinite nature of Eritrea's obligatory national service. Though Eritreans have given previous assurances that national service is limited to eighteen months, accounts indicate that the government routinely requires individuals to serve for longer periods. This deprives Eritrea's young people the opportunity to pursue other careers and encourages them to leave the country at great risk to their lives. We are also concerned over the Special Rapporteur's report on how the government is exercising more control over the four religious groups it officially recognizes, as seen with its recent crackdown on the Islamic and Catholic schools and institutions and the continued house detention of Patriarch Antonius for protesting government interference in church affairs. In addition, members of the unrecognized religious groups, especially evangelical Christians and Jehovah's Witnesses reportedly continue to face arbitrary detention, torture, and other forms of ill-treatment, and are forced to make assurances not to continue practicing unrecognized religions as a condition of release. In closing, I want to underscore that we recognize and welcome Eritrea's efforts to reengage with the international community. Progress will require all sides to seriously address historic concerns that have resulted in Eritrea's relative isolation. Eritrea has the opportunity to signal its seriousness to the international community by honestly accounting for and addressing longstanding human rights concerns, a step that would be a win for the government of Eritrea and its citizens. Thank you. Question. Mr. Special Rapporteur, the Eritrean government has been sending signals that it is more open to international engagement than it has been in the past. If this is the case, how could the international community most effectively use an opening as an opportunity to improve the human rights situation? Thank you.
Thank you. Now Australia has the floor.
Madam Vice President, Australia welcomes increased engagement by the government of Eritrea with the international community and its commitment to implement Eritrea's universal periodic review recommendations. Australia appreciates the Special Rapporteur on Eritrea's efforts. We encourage the government of Eritrea to increase cooperation with the mandate of the Special Rapporteur and to implement the recommendations of the Commission of Inquiry's May 2016 report. Australia reiterates the Special Rapporteur's concerns, including reports of sexual and gender-based violence. Madam Vice President, we remain disturbed by the Commission of Inquiry's findings of reports of human rights violations, including the arbitrary use and open-ended duration of military service, the absence of judicial processes, disappearances, indefinite detention, and the use of torture. We call on the government of Eritrea to cooperate with the UN human rights mechanisms put in place to help it address human rights concerns and to tackle impunity with regard to perpetrators of human rights violations. Australia encourages Eritrea to broaden its democratic space, including with respect to freedom of expression. We urge the government of Eritrea to implement the 1997 constitution and to respect human rights treaties to which it is party. Thank you.
Thank you. Je cède la parole à la France.
I give the floor to France. Thank you, Madam Vice President. France supports what was said by the European Union. Would like to thank the Special Rapporteur on the human rights situation in Eritrea for her presentation. France is deeply concerned about the human rights situation in Eritrea. We deplore the lack of substantial measures taken to date by the Eritrean authorities to implement the recommendations of the Special Rapporteur, as made by this council in its previous resolutions on the matter. This situation is made more worrying by the fact that the Commission of Inquiry has concluded that some human rights violations are systematic and generalized, and they therefore amount to crimes against humanity. We urge the Eritrean authorities to act, sorry, to improve the human rights situation and improve the fundamental freedoms in the country, including civil and political rights, and to improve the rule of law in accordance with the recommendations which they accepted during the UPR. France encourages the Eritrean authorities to continue the dialogue that has begun with the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights and to ensure that this dialogue gives rise to effective progress as far as human rights are concerned. Cooperation with the UN human rights mechanisms are an opportunity for the authorities to present their point of view and to identify the concrete options they can explore. In this perspective, we continue to encourage Eritrea to consider the creation of a local OHCHR office. It is also crucial that Eritrea cooperate with the Special Rapporteur, including by granting her access to its territory. Thank you very much.
Merci. Next speaker is the delegation of China, please.
Madam Vice President, China consistently advocates constructive dialogue and cooperation in handling human rights issues. The progress and efforts made by Eritrea in the promotion and protection of human rights deserve recognition from the international community. We call on all parties to look at the human rights situation in Eritrea in a comprehensive, objective, and impartial manner, and in accordance with the will and the needs of Eritrea, provide constructive assistance in terms of human rights capacity building. We also encourage constructive dialogue among all parties involved to address the concerns of the countries in question. Countries in the Horn of Africa are interdependent as they share common interests and similar challenges. China sincerely hopes that countries in this region will bear in mind the overall interest of this peace and stability in this region and the fundamental interest of their own people, live in harmony, improve mutual trust, solve their differences properly through dialogue and consultation to seek common development. This is the interest of the countries in the region. China will uphold an impartial position in this process and play a constructive role in promoting peace through dialogue. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam. The next speaker is Greece, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Vice President. Greece aligns self with a statement delivered by the European Union. Greece would like to thank the Special Rapporteur, Ms. Kitharuth, and the Office of the High Commissioner for their excellent and high-quality work. We express our concern on the human rights situation in Eritrea. Issues raised by previous HRC resolutions, the Special Rapporteur and the former Commission of Inquiry have yet to be addressed in a substantial manner. While some positive developments are to be noted regarding the country's limited yet renewed engagement with the UN, the country has yet to prove its willingness to address the international community on some of the gravest human rights violations that it faces. We would especially like to express our concern regarding the non-implementation of the recommendations of the HRC Resolution 3535. We urge the government to respect the Special Rapporteur's mandate and grant her full and unhindered access to the country. We further call on the government of Eritrea to ensure the respect for human rights and fundamental freedoms and the rule of law, as well as to end the practice of arbitrary detention and detention without due process. We also urge the government of Eritrea to respect freedom of religion or belief and the property rights, including those of foreign communities in the country. Finally, Greece would like to remind that last year, the real estate property of the Greek community in Asmara, which houses the Office of the Honorary Consulate General of Greece, was confiscated by the Eritrean authorities. This constitutes a blatant violation of international law in the Vienna Convention and Consular Relations of 1963. We ask the government of Eritrea to return this real estate to its lawful owners. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to the delegation of Venezuela, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Venezuela does not support and in fact shall oppose initiatives specifically targeting developing countries, and especially when these mandates have not been accepted by the country concerned. The UPR is the appropriate mechanism to promote international cooperation on human rights, and this through a dialogue among equals and without politicization. In this respect, Eritrea has cooperated with this council and its human rights mechanisms and the human rights mechanisms to protect the rights of citizens. The country has undergone two UPR reviews before the council. The community nations must provide support so that Eritrea can give effect to the recommendations it has accepted. The mandates against countries violate the principles of the respect of integrity, sovereignty, and non-interference in the internal matters of states embodied in the UN Charter. We reiterate once again the pressing need for this council to abide by its mandates to protect human rights on the basis of genuine dialogue and cooperation while strictly adhering to the principle of universality and without resorting to coercion, double standards, and politicization, and this through and without imposing mandates against countries. Thank you very much, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sudan, please.
Thank you, Vice President. The delegation of the Sudan has carefully followed the oral update of the Special Rapporteur on Eritrea and would like to make the following remarks. Sudan underlines the principles of human rights and the ground reality and progress in Eritrea, including the emerging engagement and international cooperation. Sudan believes that the optimal way to promote and protect human rights is by promoting genuine dialogue and cooperation, ensuring non-sell activity, impartiality, objectivity, and due politicization and double standards, as well as enhancing states' capacity in the form of technical assistance. Madam Vice President, we remain confident that the consent and the cooperation between the mandate holder and the concerned country represent the sole alternative to achieving tangible progress on the ground, and that no positive result could be achieved in the absence of dialogue and mutual respect. In conclusion, Madam Vice President, my delegation encourages Eritrea to continue its engagement with the international community, and we believe that support and technical assistance should be provided to Eritrea. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I give the floor to Djibouti, Your Excellency.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Djibouti welcomes all panelists and thanks them for their insightful presentation. We touch upon an array of issues related to one or several aspects of the human rights violations that are taking place in Eritrea. Djibouti hopes that our exchange today would be an opportunity for a constructive dialogue and address the absence of Eritrea. Madam Deputy High Commissioner, my delegation comments the continued effort of the Office of the High Commissioner in engaging with the Eritrean authorities to improve the situation of human rights in the country. My delegation indeed deploves the lack of progress in most issues related to human rights, in particular the ones referred to the Human Rights Council resolutions. My delegation encourages you to continue your effort in engaging with the Eritrean government. Madam Special Rapporteur, it is regrettable that the government of Eritrea continues to reject your mandate, hence failing to fulfill its international obligation by not respecting the various relevant resolutions of the UN bodies, including the Human Rights Council ones. The inhumane detention condition should be a matter of concern for the council, particularly when it has led to the death of prisoners, including political prisoners, as reported today. The continued practice of incommunicated detention raises great concern to our delegation, which remains deeply preoccupied about the fate of the thirteen remaining Djiboutian prisoners detained... detained in such conditions in Eritrea since 2008. Djibouti reiterated its concern about the findings of the Commission of Inquiry on the situation of human rights in Eritrea on the reasonable grounds to believe that crimes against humanity have been committed since 1991. Madam Vice President, the perpetual argument of politicization, selectivity, and stigmatization, as well as non-cooperation and the systematic denial approach adopted by Eritrea cannot hide the sad facts and hardship of Eritreans trying to escape drastic and dire human rights abuses. My delegation urges Eritrea once more to engage with all UN mandate holders, relevant stakeholders, such as the African Union, including the civil society, to guarantee and improve its respect of international human rights and humanitarian law on its soul and to opt rather for an enhanced genuine dialogue. Finally, my delegation would like to hear from the panelists on how member states could assist better the Special Rapporteur in her mandate and all efforts to generate an effective dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me remind all speakers, please stick to the time limit. I give the floor now to United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The United Kingdom would like to thank the Special Rapporteur for her work over the duration of the mandate. The United Kingdom shares concerns highlighted by the Special Rapporteur on the human rights situation in Eritrea. We are particularly concerned by the arbitrary detention of people practicing or involved in teaching certain faiths. This stands in contrast to the freedom to worship that the majority of Eritreans enjoy. We welcome Eritrea's continued engagement with the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights and the work by the United Nations Development Programme in taking forward the recommendations of the 2014 Universal Periodic Review. These are welcome indications that the government of Eritrea is prepared to engage in efforts to improve the human rights situation, and we look forward to concrete progress on implementation. We would like to ask the Special Rapporteur for her views on other potential and emerging areas for human rights cooperation, aside from the UPR process. The United Kingdom continues to call on the government of Eritrea to honor all of its international human rights obligations and to cooperate with all aspects of the UN human rights system. The UK continues to encourage the government of Eritrea to allow the UN Special Rapporteur on Human Rights in Eritrea access to the country. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Madam. I give the floor to Ireland, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ireland fully aligns itself to the statements of the EU. We remain concerned by the human rights situation in Eritrea and strongly urge the Eritrean authorities to take action, in particular in the areas highlighted by the Special Rapporteur, the former Commission of Inquiry, and other human rights bodies. We welcome and encourage renewed engagement by Eritrea with the international community. However, we reiterate our call for the government of Eritrea to enact the political and legal reforms required to end human rights violations, end impunity, and ensure accountability for past violations. Young men and women continue risking their lives to flee from Eritrea. Our international response to displacement, human trafficking, and smuggling from Eritrea cannot be institutionally detached from the political and economic context which has created conditions leading to flight. We stress, therefore, that cooperation and engagement between Eritrea and the international community is essential to improving the lives of Eritrean citizens, and we echo the calls made by the EU and others for Eritrea to cooperate fully with relevant international actors and with the Special Rapporteur and other human rights mechanisms through respecting their mandates and granting access to and around the country. This will allow a comprehensive assessment of the human rights situation on the ground in cooperation with the international community and help to improve the lives of Eritrea's citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Cuba, please.
Thank you, Madam President. For Cuba, international cooperation, dialogue, and respectful exchange among countries are the basis for respect for the principles of the UN Charter, as well as effective ways to fulfill the objective of facilitating the achievement of higher standards in promoting and protecting human rights. We advocate for exhausting all possible measures within the Human Rights Council to ensure that detention is given to the concerns of the international community and potential challenges for certain countries as regards the existence of an environment that is favorable to the exercise of human rights. We do not believe that punitive approaches or sanctions can bring us closer to those objectives. We call for a new chance to be given to cooperation with direct involvement of regional and subregional African organizations in addressing matters of concern and seeking effective solutions, which involve the Eritrean authorities, address their concerns, and achieve the objective of helping the people of Eritrea. Thank you.
Thank you. We shall now turn to our list of speakers for national human rights institutions and non-governmental organizations. And I give the floor to International Fellowship of Reconciliation, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The government of Eritrea wants to present an image of a modern, progressive, and peaceful Eritrea. However, all forms of repression of Eritrean citizens by their own government continue unabated. Over 10,000 prisoners of conscience have been detained in over 350 prisons across Eritrea under harsh conditions and without due legal process. Security forces fire shows in the capital in response to a student protest in October. The students were protesting the arrest of their community school board president, Haji Musa Mohammed Noor. After four months incommunicado detention, Haji Musa died in detention on 1st of March. The government arrested over 1,000 mourners at his funeral, and they are still detained incommunicado. Salomon Hafthom, a former head of Eritrean telecommunications, died after 14 years in prison without access to lawyer or family visitation. His son, who lives in Germany, is present at this council today. Arrest of Christians multiplied in 2017. At least 400 remain in prison without charge or trial, many for over 10 years. With no time limit on the national service, it is no wonder that every Eritrean who can tries to leave making Eritrea one of the countries producing the highest numbers of refugees. The repression of the private sector has worsened. The government-limited cash withdrawals from banks and depositors have lost control of their own personal and business funds. The regime wants an economy that is totally controlled by its party. Madam Vice President, does the panel agree that there have been no verifiable human rights changes on the ground in Eritrea? We recommend that the Human Rights Council must renew the mandate of the Special Rapporteur at a minimum and look for new opportunities to push for improvements in Eritrea. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Article 19, International Center Against Censorship, please.
Madam Vice President, Article 19 regrets that the situation for freedom of expression has not improved since the publication of the Commission of Inquiry's findings in 2016 on the Special Rapporteur's report last year. It remains true, as the Commission found, that the denial of freedom of expression, assembly, and association rights remains systematically entrenched in Eritrea. We further regret that the government of Eritrea has chosen not to engage in this enhanced interactive dialogue, in particular to respond to the concerns of civil society. We condemn the recent and severe crackdown on those protesting a government decree to close religious schools in Eritrea. This includes alleged use of lethal force against a student protest in Asmara in October and the arbitrary and incommunicado detention of an unknown number of persons, including the chairperson of Aldea Islamic School, who we understand has since died in custody. Since 2001, Eritrea has not had a private media after the arrest of at least 18 journalists and 11 former government officials on the pretext of national security. These detentions have been condemned by two ACHPR decisions, the most recent in 2016 concerning David Isaac. Article 19 notes that there are an estimated 69 journalists who have been arbitrarily detained for exercising their right to freedom of expression since 2001 without charge or fair trial. While at least eight journalists are thought to have died in detention, a wall of silence means it is impossible to know how many others remain in prison, where they are, and what their condition is. Government-controlled media is the only type of local media in Eritrea. They act as a mouthpiece of the Ministry of Information. Access to alternative information sources, including online, is limited. We share the Special Rapporteur's previously stated concerns that since 2016, new regulations require internet cafes to register customers before they can use the internet. We also note that Eritrea's sole and government-owned telecommunications provider continues to routinely block online news sources. Internet penetration levels and internet speeds remain woefully slow. This council must renew the Special Rapporteur's mandate at its upcoming 38th session and ensure accountability for human rights violations in the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Center for Global Non-Killing.
Madam Vice President, it has been many months since the Commission of Inquiry on Eritrea concluded that crimes against humanity are maybe being perpetrated in Eritrea unabated. We await in anticipation the implementation of the recommendations met and adopted then. Meanwhile, the situation in Eritrea continues to get from bad to worse. In August last year, Faradu Dabesai, who was taken to prison during house-to-house raid in July, died in a desert detention camp. She left three young children. Her crime was being a member of an unregistered church. Just over a week ago, we learned that Haji Musa passed away in prison. He was 93, and he spent the last four months of his life in prison. His crime was speaking against a government decision and to keep the school that he was a principal of free from state interference. Finally, I also remember the former Foreign Minister, Haile Woldençay, who was taken to prison in September 2001 and spent 17 years in unlawful incommunicado detention together with his G11 colleagues. He suffered many illnesses and was finally reported dead last month, but unconfirmed. His crime was calling for accountability from the president. In light of all this and more, we welcome the relentless, ongoing work of the Special Rapporteur shedding light into the violations that are occurring in Eritrea, and we look forward to the continuation of the mandate as we move to the crucial implementation of the Commission of Inquiry's recommendations. I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Human Rights Watch.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Repeated Human Rights Council resolutions have condemned, in the strongest terms, the systematic, widespread, and gross human rights violations by the Eritrean government. The council has condemned violations including arbitrary detention, torture, sexual violence, religious oppression, denials of the rights of free expression, and peaceful assembly. The council has also expressed grave concern over the unlimited conscription of Eritrean citizens and the use of conscripts in forced labor. Council resolutions have urged Eritrea to end these practices and allow international and regional human rights bodies, including special rapporteurs, unhindered access to the country to monitor progress. Unfortunately, the Eritrean government has repeatedly ignored the council's resolutions. Little change, if any, has occurred. Prisoners remain jailed without trial indefinitely and sometimes incommunicado. Torture in captivity continues to be a major concern. No independent press is allowed. Endless conscription and its abuses still control the lives of Eritreans, especially the young. The government continues to refuse to give UN and international human rights monitoring bodies access to the country. It has made no effort to hold violators of human rights accountable. We urge the council to recommend to the international community to implement the principle of universal jurisdiction. As we said here, over the last two years, all states should investigate and, evidence permitting, prosecute in a fair trial individuals found on their territories who are alleged to be responsible for human rights violations in Eritrea amounting to crimes under international law. We continue to urge the council to recommend that all countries permit fleeing Eritreans to lodge asylum claims and then assess those claims fairly. For many Eritreans, a flight to freedom remains the only way to avoid the Eritrean government's rampant brutalities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is East and Horn of Africa Human Rights Defenders Project.
Madam Vice President, on behalf of Civic Health Defend Defenders, Eritrean Law Society, Human Rights Concern Eritrea, Information Forum for Eritrea, and One Day Seum, I would like to thank the Special Rapporteur for her dedication to furthering human rights in Eritrea. We also thank the panelists of this enhanced interactive dialogue for their contributions. Madam Vice President, pursuant to Resolution L13, we would like to inquire whether the Office of the High Commissioner can share results of its engagement with the government of Eritrea. The government of Eritrea was requested to strengthen its cooperation with OHCHR to communicate pertinent information regarding detained journalists and opposition members and to consider establishing an office in Eritrea. Has OHCHR seen any progress on any of these requests? In November 2017, a riot protest broke out in Eritrea at the Aldea Islamic School in Asmara after a member of the school's board was arrested following a speech he made criticizing government interference in the private school's affairs. In the footage that emerged from the scene, dozens of shots could be heard, although it was unclear if there were any casualties. No transparent or credible investigation was conducted, and no information emerged about the crackdown, the number of casualties, or number of arrests. Was OHCHR able to conduct an investigation into the circumstances of this protest? The Commission of Inquiry on Human Rights in Eritrea called on the government of Eritrea to ensure accountability for past and persistent human rights violations amounting to crimes against humanity. So far, civil society has not recorded any significant institutional or legal reforms required by before the domestic legal system can hold perpetrators of international crimes to account in a fair and transparent manner. Mr. President, we wish to underline our support for the mandate of the Special Rapporteur and highlight its necessity until a time where the human rights record in Eritrea sees genuine improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Amnesty International.
Madam Vice President, Amnesty International welcomes the report of the Special Rapporteur and echoes calls to the Eritrean government for increased cooperation, as well as calls for accountability justice for past and continuing crimes in the country. Amnesty International remains concerned about the national service programme that continues to be the primary reason many Eritreans flee the country. We are also concerned about the increasing number of African and European states that are not accepting those fleeing as refugees. Most of those serving in the Eritrean national service programme are not paid a living wage. They serve for indefinite amounts of time, and there is no alternative civil service for those who object to military service on religious, ethical, or other conscientious grounds. Amnesty International continues to receive reports of unwarranted government interference into religious affairs, especially through harassment of Pentecostals and government control of private schools, including religious ones. Amnesty International laments the lack of space for political dissent in Eritrea. The Eritrean government's continued failure to provide information of fate or whereabouts of the politicians and journalists arrested in 2001 is widely concerning and remains a source of concern to us. So are the mass arrests of supporters of Haji Musa in the immediate aftermath of the 31st of October protest, when some of his supporters were arrested for attending his funeral this month. Amnesty International urges the Eritrean government to fully cooperate to the Special Rapporteur for Eritrea, including granting full and unfettered access to the country. Make efforts to respect the freedom of thought, concerns of religious in Eritrea. Release information on the whereabouts of Haile Woldençay and others arrested with him and held incommunicado since 2011, as well as those arrested for testing the death of Mohammed Noor. Madam Special Rapporteur, what recommendations do you have to other states in their procedures for evaluation of Eritrean asylum claims and resettlement status determination, considering the human rights situation in the country? Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Next speaker is United Nations Watch.
Thank you, Madam President. UN Watch welcomes today's discussion of the grave situation of human rights in Eritrea, and we commend the work of the Special Rapporteur. We wish to call the attention of this council to three areas of urgent concern. First, religious freedom continues to be denied in Eritrea, and the situation is only getting worse. According to a recent report by Open Doors, harassment and murder of Christians accused of being agents of the West is commonplace. End of quote. Thousands of Christians are in prison in Eritrea, some for more than 10 years now. Madam Rapporteur, is there a reason why your latest report only briefly mentions this issue? Are you fully aware of the scope of Eritrea's grave and systematic violation of religious freedom and how Christians are specifically targeted? Second, the situation in Eritrean prisons is alarming. According to credible reports, shipping containers are used as prison cells despite extreme temperatures and with 30 to 40 people crammed into one container. Most notorious is the Arero Secret Prison. Just recently, we heard about a reported death in this prison of Mr. Woldençay, the dissident and former Foreign Minister. Thousands of others are detained for purely political reasons and under inhumane conditions. Finally, as a result of these and other flagrant violations of basic human rights and freedoms, tens of thousands of Eritreans continue to flee the country every year. If that were not bad enough, these victims, including those who have fled to European countries, have then been subjected to intimidation practices by Eritrean officials. Madam Rapporteur, what further steps can this council take to actually make a difference on the ground for millions of victims suffering in Eritrea? I thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next speaker is Christian Solidarity Worldwide. Next speaker is Christian Solidarity Worldwide.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I speak on behalf of Christian Solidarity Worldwide about the enforced disappearance of my father, Germano Nati Gojo. He is one of the politicians held incommunicado in Eritrea since September 2001, known as the G-15. He joined the struggle for independence in 1976. He loves his country and is committed to its advancement. When arrests began in 2001, my father was on leave in Barantu. His relative died, and I met him at the wake. As we left, I told him I had heard on the radio his colleagues were jailed. He was shocked. I asked what he would do. He replied, “He too would go to prison.” Those were the last words we exchanged. He was arrested three days later by security agents as he listened to the radio on the veranda in pajamas. One stood outside the gate, the other entered and said, “Sir, we need you on a work-related issue.” Saying nothing, my father stood up and left with them. My 12-year-old sister gathered clothes and followed, but they did not see her. When they realized, she too was jailed briefly. We have not seen or heard from my father in 17 years despite inquiring. Madam Vice President, the Commission of Inquiry found Eritrea has committed crimes against humanity. My family provides a glimpse of this. My father and his colleagues suffered enforced disappearance for peacefully demanding rule of law. My sister was briefly detained underage. We are Kunama, a persecuted tribe. My mother suffered reprisal detention when I fled. I urge this Council to ignore these ingenious claims of human rights improvements. My father’s plight shows nothing has changed. I ask member states to prioritize justice and accountability instead, maintaining pressure until prisoners of consigns are free and rule of law is established. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now give the floor to our presenters for their concluding remarks. There is three minutes for each statement left, and I’ll now give the floor first to Ms. Kate Gilmer.
Thank you very much indeed, Madam Vice President, and thank you distinguished delegates for your kind consideration of this panel’s contributions. Allow me to assure you that the High Commissioner’s office is keen to provide you with a full account of the technical cooperation with the government of Eritrea and will do so on the 14th of March. But just to give you a flavor of that report, I can advise that we are indeed working to propose projects of cooperation to the government, including on the administration of justice for the purpose of enabling reforms, legal reforms that can be in line with international obligations. Further, we have indeed offered training to Eritrean officials working specifically on UN treaty body reporting, and a delegation has been invited for this purpose and to provide a workshop that will be held in Kampala in April this year. In addition, a human rights adviser has been based in the UN country team in order to assist strengthening of the government’s efforts in cooperating with treaty bodies. I thank very much the distinguished delegates of Sudan and of China for their remarks rightly emphasizing how important it is for the state to engage constructively with the rapporteur, to do so in dialogue and mutual respect. In this regard, I note how important it is to understand impartiality, non-selectivity, and constructive engagement to be a two-way street, requiring the full engagement of the government. Excellencies, the test of mutual respect is not in how we manage agreement, but in how we manage the times when we disagree. And as the High Commissioner has said repeatedly, personalized verbal attacks against mandate holders are unacceptable and demean us all. Views contrary to those of the special rapporteur should be freely expressed; that’s only proper. But no disagreement with a message is made more legitimate by personalized attacks against a messenger. Such verbal assault of mandate holders is unworthy as it is unwarranted. And in this, I minded further to draw this Council’s attention to the fact that state officials’ most recent personalized verbal attacks against your special rapporteurs, as compared to substantive disagreement, have been directed almost exclusively against women special rapporteurs. I thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Ms. Sheila Keterot. You have the floor, Madam.
Thank you very much to all those who have put questions to me. I’ll go on, you know, one after the other in terms of what was posed. The EU asks for an assessment of general trend of human rights in Eritrea. I have given you my assessment today with regards to all the listed violations, and I haven’t seen any progress on those. People are still continuing to be arrested, freedom of expression is still curtailed, and death in custody is indeed a reality. However, one of the things I’d like to raise at this point is the lack of access. Independent observers and researchers continue to be denied access. There is still no free and independent reporting on the situation by Eritreans from within the country. Sharing information abroad, including short video clips of events as they happen or suspicion of doing so, can expose oneself to arrest and detention. In such circumstances, claims made by the government regarding their adherence to human rights norms cannot be verified. Sustained scrutiny is therefore critical, and given the continuing serious human rights situation, it is even more critical today. Now, the other issue I’d like to talk about is to the respected delegates from China, Venezuela, and Sudan. How do you engage with an interlocutor who is not even in the room? It was my first step when I took the mandate to engage with the country concerned, and I didn’t engage with anybody else before going first to the country. So it’s a difficult situation, which I would urge you, if you do have the opportunity to discuss with the country concerned, in order to open gates for further collaboration and discussion. Now, the other thing I’d like to raise quickly is I’ve been asked what progress, what is there in terms of how to open dialogue. I have one question, and it is this one, which I’d like to pose. There are certain countries who have indeed engaged, and which is quite a good opening. So I would pose this question: What tangible progress have been achieved on the ground regarding fundamental human rights I have dealt with today, which have been dealt with previously in my reports and in the reports of the Commission of Inquiry? What concrete steps have been taken by the government for necessary transformation? From my vantage point, and in all humility, I find very little. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Mr. Remi Nogilombo, please.
Madam Vice President. Thank you, Madam Vice President, Madam Deputy High Commissioner. There were certain, specific questions on behalf of my colleague, the country rapporteur that I’m replacing this afternoon, but the absence of the Eritrean government this afternoon cannot be seen as a sign of despair. The next session of the African Forum will take the opportunity to convey the concerns of civil society here present. Thanks to the complementarity of the United Nations and African Commission mechanisms, we hope to obtain responses from that country after it presents its report at the upcoming ordinary session of the African Commission on Human Peoples’ Rights at the end of April this year. We commit to this because we have followed the concerns of governments and civil society. We will be conveying certain of the questions to that government to obtain responses. Thank you.
Thank you. I give the floor to Ms. Veronica Almadon again.
Thank you, Mrs. Ambassador of Djibouti. I would like to reply to your question by saying that I wasn’t able to finish my statement, but at the end of my statement, I was going to ask the same question: How can we support the special rapporteur and how can we, how can member states be more efficient in the way they interact with the Eritrean delegation? But then I realized that it’s actually what I was trying to illustrate in my presentation, the fact that we lack, the Eritrean government has not been showing enough deliveries, and we don’t see its presence here. So the state that we’re in is that we’re having a conversation between member states, the special rapporteur, UNDP, OHCHR, the civil society, but the main stakeholder is missing. And it takes its presence, but it takes also good faith and it takes willingness to take this issue to the next level. So what I would say is just that member states have to keep supporting the mandate of the special rapporteur, give her all the necessary resources so that we keep this platform for victims that don’t have any other platform other than this one, and that also we keep ensuring the asylum rights to all these Eritrean victims that are stuck in very dangerous areas such as Libya. So these two, I think, are very necessary, maintaining the pressure and keeping the asylum rights. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the floor goes to Ms. Pamela Delaga, please.
Thank you. First, a quick response to the delegation from Australia who mentioned the issue of gender-based violence and sexual violence. Just one sentence to say about this: Among Eritrean women and girls who are in Israel, arriving across the Mediterranean, in Libya, and in other places in the world, the question about their experience of sexual violence is not a question anymore. It has to be an assumption. The majority have had such experiences, and we have a population here of girls and women who have serious needs for both clinical care and for counseling and other kinds of support. Many other delegations have asked what will it take to improve the human rights situation. I’d like to pose some possible answers for improvements in the human rights situation and the return of Eritreans home. What do I think it will take? Four things. First of all, and this is very important, is the normalization of relations in the region and in the international community, and particularly with Ethiopia. This includes the implementation of the Algiers Agreement and the International Court ruling on border demarcation, an issue which has been left pending for much too long and for which the international community can provide assistance. Normalization would not only then remove a perceived need for unending national service, but could also open trade and economic relations with neighbors and quickly improve economic conditions in Eritrea. Secondly, I would propose that an important factor could be the return to the very honorable ideals of the Eritrean independence struggle. These include respect for equality across peoples, across religions, across ethnic groups, and between men and women, empowerment of women and girls, the spirit of self-reliance, innovation, and respect for open and constructive dialogue and discussion, and establishment of institutions for good governance and rule of law. Eritrea has a number of positive lessons to share with the world, but the world cannot see those lessons because of the damper of these other human rights situations. Third, reconciliation between Eritreans in and outside of Eritrea will be very important to stop the flow of refugees, but also to improve the situation in the country, and this has to include transparency about arrests and disappearances of dozens of the founding mothers and fathers of the country, of religious leaders, of journalists, and of many, many others. And surely, this must also include the fair trial or release of political prisoners. And lastly, I would say support for the safe return of Eritreans outside, whatever their political positions, their religious beliefs, their family connections, or their histories in areas of settlement. Reconciliation will be critical for rebuilding Eritrea and rebuilding faith in Eritrea. To have this happen, Eritreans outside also continue to need protection wherever they are, access to basic services, education, and health, because they will return someday, and they can only return and help build a safe and peaceful country if they themselves are healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. This brings us to the end of the Enhanced Interactive Dialogue on the Human Rights Situation in Eritrea. I wish to thank all the presenters for their presence, for their input and the presentations we had today, and of course, also the contributions from delegations. I will now make maybe a very short break before, no, because we have one point, that is the right of reply. So we just continue. I understand that we have a delegation that wants to exercise the right of reply, and I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Israel. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We would like to exercise the right of reply in reaction to interventions made by the representatives of Syria and Iran in the discussion that took place this morning on the report of the late special rapporteur in Iran. During their interventions, these representatives referred to the State of Israel using terms that are unacceptable in United Nations deliberations. It is easy to dismiss the use of such terms as a futile attempt to divert attention from the issue at hand, in this case, the crucial examination of the dire human rights situation in the Islamic Republic of Iran. Clearly, this attempt failed utterly as the Council continued with its important discussion on operation in Iran, shedding light on the many violations occurring in this country every day. Nevertheless, we believe that this kind of behavior should not be allowed to continue unchecked, as this is anything but a technical exchange on terminology. Madam Vice President, it is deplorable that 70 years after the establishment of the State of Israel in accordance with the United Nations resolution, there are member states which still insist on ignoring reality and refrain from recognizing Israel. Indeed, it was absurd to hear the representative of the murderous government of Syria use this diversion tactic to try and help its Iranian backers undermine their discussion. But this will not help them. Israel is there, a flourishing democracy where universal human rights are upheld and promoted, not regarded with contempt as they are by Iran’s radical rulers. It is a model knowledge-based economy where opportunity for human rights, for human development, bounds. Most importantly, in this context, the State of Israel is proud to be the fulfillment of the Zionist vision of re-establishing the self-determination of the Jewish people in its historical land. It is almost inconceivable that in 2018, there are still those who refuse to accept this fact. Those like Iran and Syria, who continue to brutally violate the human rights of their own people, are certainly not in a position to question that. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. This brings us to the end of the meeting. We will reconvene tomorrow at nine AM to begin with the high-level panel discussion on violations of the human rights of children in the Syrian Arab Republic. And I hereby declare close to the thirtieth meeting of the thirty-seventh session of the Human Rights Council.